It is six o'clock, so I'd like to call the pre-council meeting to order tonight. So we welcome all of you coming in tonight. So we don't have a long agenda. Maybe in our pre-council, we can address most of the things and have a pretty quick meeting and get some things accomplished. So all right, we'll run down through the agenda and then we'll go over the visitors and allow them. We may be able to take care of the stuff in pre-council and just make it formal in the meeting. All right, your call to order tonight and then followed by the invocation, going down the list. Ms. Reese, would you mind doing the invocation and pledge?
I don't mind.
Okay, then roll call tonight. It appears that everybody's here except the attorney, and he just sent a text message that he is on his way. So maybe he'll be here by the by the meeting. We have an agenda tonight. Really don't have much on it. So we got some guests and a few of our just routine business things of concern. So maybe we can, like I said, move on pretty quick. Is there anything that we need to put on the agenda to add or delete?
Yeah, I have one. I think on the agenda, I plan to make a motion to talk about the sale for the canine dog and for the canine Tahoe or Sims for $40,000. And Police Officer Moore resigned today. So I would like to put it on number C for the items for discussion.
That's not what I was told by the.
I believe he turned in a letter of intent, but it's not a formal resignation.
Right now?
He turned in a letter of intent, but it's not a formal resignation. There were still some variables with dates, and he didn't feel comfortable turning in his actual resignation at this point.
All right, then I'll rescind this. And the next council meeting, I'll put it on the for discussion at the agenda last time.
I believe it would only be appropriate if we're going to sell the discuss selling the canine and the vehicle, that that should be once we have some formal notice of his intent to leave. So I mean, if we sold that and then the position fell through, we'd kind of be in a bad spot, so.
Could you maybe do it pending pending the resignation? I don't know if that would make sense or like Mike said, just hold on.
Well, the information that I received shows it may still be a couple of months away. So I mean, I think that might be something we hold. But I mean, I think he's back there. If he would like to have it addressed tonight or if he wants to sign. Corporal Moore, you.
That's a that's a y'all. I did in turn a letter of intent. And their start date is January 27th. My official start date is in November. But the council settles that and says the dog is gone in November, then that's when my start date will move up to November 27th. So that's I mean, that's completely off course.
Well, you've got the letter. I mean, it will dispel showing show you exactly what they showed me. That would you? To resign my position as corporal to Satsuma Police Department no later than the end of business on Friday, January the 27th, 2023. I mean, I'm just thinking that was a long way away to accept a resignation and sale tonight.
Yes. Correct. I put it out to the 27th, not playing that sort of bill good because my date, I put my date as of January the 12th. But if the sale of the dog happens before the end of the season, then my start date could be moved up to start the day Sam takes over possession or takes ownership of the dog. So the council put it in motion tonight and voted on it and said, hey, they're going to take possession and ownership of the dog November the 15th. And Sam will move my date up to November the 15th. I just put that date out there as an example of it.
See if we can get that in writing from them that they they agree to the purchase price of that. I have no problem putting it on the next meeting and going by what what was discussed the other night at the workshop and whatever the council chooses for the decision. Is that okay with y'all? This deal leaves a couple.
Well, may I couldn't we word it somehow that we'll agree to to sell for that price, but not until the date of the resignation? In other words, it's official on the sale of the thing according to when Mr. Moore turns into resignation.
If there's no opposition from the council, I will have Sergeant Wilkut work with their chief and iron out a date and by the next meeting, which I guess is what. Two or three weeks from tonight, we will have it. It'll be two weeks from tonight. So two weeks from tonight, we can have it done and that still.
Just have it where it all happens at the same time is what I'm saying. That way we're not selling the car, the door of the dog before that happens.
That's fine with me. That's good with the council. We'll do that. Does that satisfy you?
No opposition down here.
Okay. Okay, I think everybody agrees. We'll take care of it and have it worked out by the next meeting for you. Okay.
Can I bring up something as well?
Sure, sure.
I would like to see if we could open the discussion up on since we've got the budget passed and we included raises in there. I'd like to discuss that if we could. Get your get your opinion on, you know, what we want to do. And if if we can go ahead and kind of get it rolling so it could be on the maybe their November payroll, whatever.
Can we have a workshop and discuss all that?
It's in the budget. I mean, that's that's why I brought it up.
Are you making a motion?
We're in a workshop. You can't make a motion.
I'd rather discuss it now, I guess, since we're all here instead of having to come back another day.
Well, we also discussed today promotions are coming up also. So I mean, I would think promotions and any type of, I guess you're saying, across the board raise?
That's that's why I tossed it out there for discussion. Get everyone's opinion on it and see if you wanted to do some percentage across the board and then weigh it or how you wanted to do it.
Well, I certainly think we probably need to look and see what the other cities are doing and also figure in our raises and what positions we may have coming up so we can see about filling positions, promotions and across the board raise. So I think all of those need to be in concert with each other. That's what I would think. I'm not opposed to the discussion on if you if you'd like to let's discuss that a little tonight. So items for discussion, you'd like to add a C?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have one amendment to the agenda. We're going to create a item number C for discussion and consideration, and we will discuss what we're looking at as far as hiring, promotions, and what type of raise we might be looking at for all the city employees this coming year. Now can I have a motion to pass the agenda as distributed with the one add on?
I'll handle it.
I'll second it.
Motion being made by Mr. Skellton, seconded by Mr. Little. Okay, our last council meeting was held on October the 4th, 2022. Did y'all have a chance to look over the minutes that's in the packet? I didn't notice any big.
Yes, sir. I did.
Want to y'all want to make a motion to?
I can do that.
Second.
All right, on the minutes from the workshop, which was held last Tuesday night on October the 11th. Minutes are in the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Little to make the motion to be seconded by Mr. Phillips. All right, we don't have any recognition tonight, but we do have two visitors. The first one, Mr. Will Stewart. Will, would you like to approach real quick and just kind of tell the council what it is you're having?
Yes, sir. I appreciate y'all. Appreciate y'all hearing me out. Listen, I'll be real quick, and I don't really want to bother the council something that's so small, but I was advised I need to talk to y'all about it. Oh, y'all know Dad. I think mostly y'all know my father, Bill Stewart, served as a mayor from '08 to '12. And, you know, as a mayor, he had a lot of great accomplishments we're all proud of. But the small issue tonight is the picture. There's a picture of him in the back, and we kind of looked at it when we were here last time for a daughter's awards and said, hey, seeing up the snuff. It's a picture that kind of looks like it was taken taken kind of quick and not one that we anybody can remember approving. So I came and spoke with, I forget her name, an assistant up front, Trish, yes. And Trish asked me that I need to come and talk to y'all about it. We have some professionally produced pictures during the campaign that we wanted to put up there in lieu of this. I got a copy of it if you guys would like to see it. I'm just really here tonight to ask if you guys would consider replacing the picture with a professional quality picture. And when I spoke with Trish, the frame is permanently sealed. So if there's any expense, I'd be happy to take care of that. And I've also had the prints produced. And that's really all I have. Yeah.
I'm not sure when the picture was hung really, but I think it would be super cool and such an honor to invite the previous mayor back for an unveiling of his picture. Whether we do that now or going forward, you know, just kind of make it a special moment for that person and, you know, unveil it maybe like on an easel and then bring his family out, him or her, whoever it might be, bring the family out and kind of make it a big deal. So because a mayor is important to the city. We want to just say thank you, and that'd be a nice way to do that.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. We good? Well, I guess you guys will decide on this and let me know.
There's no problem with it. I don't think there's any opposition from the council. I would like for you, since we're talking about his picture, to have him here since he is still alive.
I will, and I told him, I said, Dad, hey, I just just I didn't think about it till yesterday, and I was talking to him, he's away, but I really appreciate it and on his behalf as well.
So I hope y'all understand, I would like to make sure the person whose picture we're placing isn't aware of the that we're doing that.
Thank you, guys.
Maybe we'll bring him out on the Tuesday after it's ready.
Okay. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. I don't see any reason to stick around. You can cut out tonight. We'll just in the in the in the council meeting, we'll just say that we discussed it with you and agreed to do that, and we'll work out the future date.
Thanks, sir.
You do that, or you're dead.
Just get with me and.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, man.
All righty, the second person we have on the for visitors tonight is Mr. Carl Knight, a longtime resident here. Come on up, Mr. Knight. Would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Carl Knight, and we just purchased the old forehand house at 5556 Fourth Street. And for the record, if I ever say I'm going to renovate an old house again, somebody hit me with a two-by-four. But anyway, me and my wife bought that house. It was always her dream house, and she told me, you know, if it ever comes up for sale, we got to buy it. So we bought it and sold our other little house and got it fixed up. But anyway, kind of unspinooned to us, we bought that house and started the process of remodeling, and we'd see these cars come beside the house, but it was only coming from one house down the road. And then we talked to them, and they said that it was an old right of way. And so anyway, we're there now, and if you drive, and it's not a, I mean, just dirt and grass, and if you drive by it, you can stick your hand out there, and you might get a splinter in your hand off my old house or Ms. Jones' privacy fence. And the kids in the house behind the old post office right there, they play. And whenever I left, they was having a good football game and went along, and they ran right across that old right of way into my yard, caught the ball, scored, I do believe. But there's a certain house on Orange Avenue that they just make a horseshoe all the time. And not only them, but sometimes vehicles I never recognize. So I guess it's their friends or drinking buddies or whatever. So we, I say Ms. Joan and myself and Finkleys that join our property right there, we would really appreciate it if we could close that right of way before some little kid or my grandkids or somebody gets hurt right there because, you know, it's just a blind spot and kids running across the yards. And so I got a picture of the layout. If any of y'all would like to have it, if you hadn't seen it or if you want to ride by and look at it, but we'd really appreciate it if we could do away with that old right of way. The other end has not been kept up, so there's oak trees about that big around in it. So it's been there a long time. But anyway, I guess that's about all I got.
May I see a picture?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I didn't even see a space for a car to pass through when I drove out.
It's not really. But I mean, it's.
Oh, you have like a where you stood at the road and took like a picture of the house? No, okay, that's fine.
This right here is the beautiful, the lights are beautiful. Me and my wife love sitting on the porch and looking at the lights. This is the Baldwin.
Sure, sure.
Okay, the highlighted red is our property. And these people come out from down here. Everybody else has a fence except the Finkleys and these people. The Finkleys don't come out that way. They use Orange Avenue like they're supposed to. But this is the lot that comes out of that way. But the highlighted red is ours. But it's just a narrow place.
Yeah, I just I don't even see a space, so I'll have to go back by and take a better look.
I don't know if there's anything else y'all need from me.
To abandon the right of way, I guess we would just have to have the adjoining property owners all the way down.
Well, we have a form that we don't abandon the right of way. I don't know if it's opened or not as a street.
Can we just close the road?
Well, if it's open, you have to, there's a procedure you have to follow, and that form has that. You need the application. You'll need the other signatories that adjoin that, that they are in agreement with it. Then the council has to vote on it and have to post it as as an item for somebody to come up here and.
All right, now, I'm just really concerned, and I don't know how this all works, but I'm just concerned where my property is coming back. You know what I'm saying? Do I have to get signatures for people all the way down the street?
It it well, it's two questions. Usually it's an unopened right of way, and there are a lot of those in the city. And just because somebody's using it doesn't mean it's an open right of way.
Okay.
If we have never opened it, then the people that are joining, that have property that had touched the part that we're going to close have to sign. If it's somewhere else and we're not closing that, if it's been open, you don't have to have everybody else. It sounds like to me you would need, I hadn't seen the map, but you would need to.
Here you go. I'm sorry. I gave you one of mine.
It goes there's Fourth Street and what's the street behind it?
He said it did. And I wanted her to look at it. He was going to meet me. He couldn't make it.
Anyway, this is Orange Avenue.
Okay.
You just go right here, it's a block.
And all them houses access their property off.
All of Orange Avenue. That's where it is right there?
Yes, this house here is the one they come down Orange, they park right here, and when they get ready to leave, they just come out here and drive.
And that she right?
This is my house, the highlighted red.
Oh, okay, this is the alleyway you want to drive?
That's the alleyway coming back out in front of Baldwin.
It's pretty dangerous. I never realized.
Yeah, it's the the actual path them people drive.
And this is where the oaks were back in here you're talking about?
Yes, sir. All this is big oats up in here.
It's probably not open, but I think you would need to get these people's signature.
Just right here, my property, these two right here.
No, that one on both sides, not just one side.
Here, here, and here.
And these two.
Okay, and these two also?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think some of them houses owned down are rental houses.
Yeah, but I was just saying he need where the yellow line is touching is he needs to get those signatures if we're going to abandon that. Heather, don't you have a form for that? And just Heather can give you the form for that, and we'll need to get the signatures on it.
So I got to go past the property line on down to get signatures?
Just the property that's touching this right of way, like from here to here, that you're going to abandon? That's all you would need. Anybody's property on either side that touch it. And if they say no, we we I don't think we have to have unanimous.
No, I don't think.
Is that person in question that's using it, is he he or she in that?
Well, I just drew this yellow line right here. I'm sorry, I'm taking off time, though, because that's the only people that use it coming out of there coming back towards Baldwin Square. I give everybody a piece of paper. Did anybody else go look at that?
I did.
Yeah, but then I went and looked at it too, and it's pretty dangerous. You agree, Jason? And also tonight, and I know I need to shut up, but. No, you're fine, Carl. You're fine. But I would like to go ahead and put put, I'd just like to go ahead and stop it for some kid, for some my grandkid or some small kid gets hurt. I'd just like to do something. Can I block it or do something temporary? Leave a vehicle parked there or something to maybe keep kids from getting hurt?
If we're going to do it, if it's a safety issue and we're going to temporary block it, we the city needs to block it if it's a safety and then go through procedures. But if it's, he doesn't have the authority to block it.
No.
And if it's not a safety issue, then we need to leave it open until we go through the process.
I don't know the ins and outs, but I do know there was a message left by a lady today. I had some issues. She heard that you were coming or something. I don't know her name, but it's up for me to call her back, and she has some concern about it, so I don't know who it is.
Oh, it's probably the lady that's driving. I don't know.
It's definitely a safety issue.
Trish says she did explain to her that they would have.
You're talking about Jay, the car for me to use at his house where they're coming through. So close. Everybody steps out from that house and step right.
Well, if y'all feel like it's a safety issue, you could vote to temporarily close it to address it and then put a barricade up, appropriate barricade that we would use, and then go through the process.
I personally feel it is. If you go by and look at it, it's you can't turn safely and almost not hit his house. It's my opinion.
I agree that it is also.
We just need to vote temporarily close it and then go through the process.
Or you get down to the other roof and do that.
Well, I'm going to admit, I got a I got a trail of piece of equipment parked in or parked in it right now. I'm just going to be honest with you.
I've seen it there.
Okay. Well, I'm just being honest.
I ordered it out of the parking there, too.
Okay, well, we'll bring it back up at the council meeting and the motion in a second. We'll we can vote to temporarily close it until we can go through the proper notice. And I feel like it's going to require it being just that long and it's touching other properties, but we can do that. Shouldn't be a problem.
Well, thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Carl. Is there anyone else tonight that wants to come before the council? Okay, if there's no one else to come before the council, I have a few things, but most of them are pretty well just routine that we have every week. We still have several members in our community that are sick, so we need to keep those families in our thoughts and prayers. I think there may be a fundraiser or two scheduled. Mr. Phillips didn't hear of fundraiser this weekend?
The Sunny Lodge is having for Lee Burleson, I think it's Friday and Saturday, where they go sell ribs and barbecue dinners.
Yeah, well, maybe y'all can try to make it by there at some point. The Rebuild Alabama Road Fund that we have reported on, all the stuff is ordered. The contractor said today through our engineer that as soon as the risers are in that they will start, and they are still anticipating them being here by the first of the month. Don't forget in the morning, Civil Southeast will be here for a bid opening on the sidewalk project. That's at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. Public Works was able to go pick the chairs we purchased up from Mobile Popcorn. Travis, you are here in case there's any questions regarding the netting that y'all have been doing the research on. We might want to tell them if you have that with you real quick, what what y'all have found or what.
We measured today, it's like 200 feet of net that we need to go. From Lake O'Neal, approximately 75 foot and a second. A little more than that. We've got some prices of just the net and all of them. It's all the issue of the price. If you walk aside, we can make it happen. We have to reveal the price.
What's the height on that?
Going to go from Stan with the hill back to Lake O'Neal.
Well, we're surprised someone did.
Several different prices. $3,000 or.
Is that going to go from the ground up 12 feet or attached? Are there different quotes in here? Different ones?
That's a silicon problem.
Sure.
Let's put that on for a workshop. I mean, we're all agreeing to it. We're just having a difficult time finding because I don't think that's really what we wanted right there that he's got.
Yeah, yeah.
Just handed that to me. So I just didn't want y'all to think we were not having them look into it. Also, Mr. Tarver did get the doors added. I don't think he completed them on Steel Creek Lodge today, so the new doors were were installed there. Also, at Steel Creek down there today, thank you. See, they were putting the deck and board on the chapel, so that thing's really making some progress. Y'all will keep those guys working for another couple of weeks. Y'all will have that thing looking really good. This is something I've been looking at. I don't know if you want to hand that down to Mr. Little and send it back down. I'd spoke with Alda a while back, and. I'd spoke with Aldott a while back, and regarding the intersection that we have so much trouble with, and if you're up there between five, about five and eight, eight-thirty in the morning, in front of the Pilot, you'll see the, um, the traffic backup that we have, and it's everywhere, I mean, it's going north and southbound forty-three, it's trying to get out of the Pilot, and the Chevron, um, getting out of Powers and Thomas that will back up, especially, you get a long train to come through there in the mornings, it's, it's quite a, a, uh, a traffic jam, that's probably the biggest one we have in the city, and we have that almost every morning. I spoke with Aldott, and they said that they thought there might be some grant money, so we got to looking, and since the traffic is backing up over the railroad, I was referred to an engineer, um, a Ms. Fisher, who does rail grant stuff, safety, she's worked with some other cities here in Mobile County. She said she thinks that the problem that we have, do y'all see what I'm saying, how that goes, we're gonna let the rest of them go? If we widen that crossing, allowing one lane just to go and turn and go north instead of being stopped, we'd have to expand the width of the crossing, and then maybe have an acceleration lane, as there's a deceleration on the other side, it would basically just put one on that side. She did say that, um, she thought showing that the, you know, the vehicle traffic would improve, the, it would make the rail crossings safer instead of people, because what really got me looking at is one of the gentlemen up there who had an accident there several years ago, without calling his name, he called and said he liked to have another one with a train, but, and he asked me if we would at least look into it, so I said, well, we'll look at it, I mean, there's nobody opposed to it, but Ms. Fisher has said that we may have to hire somebody to do the traffic study, to give them the numbers and the times, and she was unable to get me anything for tonight's meeting in writing, but if y'all don't have any problems with that, I would like to at least pursue that and get back with you. We may have to spend some money in order to apply for the grant, but both of them think that between the Aldott and the rail grant, that they, they feel like we have a pretty good shot, so if y'all don't have any problems, I will get with you, and like I said, we'll get something formal, and she said she could not do the traffic count, that they were not certified for that, so that would have to be something she would contract out, and, uh, like I said, I did find out that they have worked for other cities, and mainly related to rail projects, so if y'all don't have any problem with that, it's just gonna take me a little while to get some information.
Could you also, um, extend the turn lane that's on the northbound side, that would turn left into that area, you know, like where you get the green light, a lot of times, you know, the cars that come off the interstate have to cross all the way over, and it seems that, that people that are on the left-hand side, um, end up going into that turn lane, if we could somehow maybe make that longer.
Yes, I've actually asked Aldott to please could study that while they.
This over here, yeah, make this a little bit longer, so you can put more cars that are waiting to turn in, into, yeah.
I also think that the new type lights that you see that go, especially late at night, instead of stopping the turn lanes.
Oh, gosh, yes.
To the yield or something, and I asked them if they would look at that, but there again, it goes back, we got to have some numbers and put something together in order to move from, so if y'all don't have any problem with it, I'll let you know, but like I said, I just, that we're not able to get it to them today, so. Spoke with Matt Jones yesterday, he's, nothing good news, but he still says that we are the next project that will be bid on the water sewer, that, so we are now sitting in that spot. He feels confidence is gonna happen this year, but that's all I can say. There were a couple of things that are regarding, uh, legal issues that I feel like we need to discuss in executive session tonight, because it could be litigation, um, with the city, so, um, if at the end of our meeting tonight, if we could go into executive session in about ten or fifteen minutes, I would like for Jay to give y'all an update on a couple of things, and, uh, and I would also like to, uh, mention to y'all, uh, some matters regarding the Mobile County Personnel Board and some of the, uh, recent activity goes, going there that affects us in the city, so, but I feel like that possibly could one day be litigation. Y'all know I'm saying that with one of the personnel board members sitting in front of us, so, uh, I'm not real comfortable there, but, uh, I think he would understand, so, Mr. Willie, hopefully you'll, you'll understand that. Okay, uh, that's all I have tonight, so we'll move into, um, public services with Mr. Little.
Yeah, I don't have anything there.
Good, thank you, moving on from Mr. Butler and Public Safety. Man, we're gonna go with. Okay, Jason, all right, for y'all, ahead of our writing, Ms. Reese?
Yes, sir, I'll keep it brief for this meeting, but give more details at the real meeting. Um, are we gonna have a Veterans Day, um, event hosted at City Hall?
Yes, ma'am, I was planning on, I've talked with Mr. President all there, he's right out front, you can see, uh, we have, um, been working on that, and I think they're hoping to work with about having a possible dinner again this year.
Okay, I just, um, had seen that it was close to a date that I was looking at for, um, a possible ribbon cutting for the Bark Park, um, that would be Saturday, November twelfth, um, we don't have to set it tonight, but, um, tentatively, maybe for that date at ten o'clock. The water fountain looks great, it's ready to go. Still waiting on the grant information, um, it seems like it's a, a little bit of a slow process, but he's had questions, and, um, I've just been able to give him the answers, um, so I'll let y'all know if I hear anything new. Um, also, um, on the fence behind the Bark Park, there are, um, some painted white spaces, and my idea was to, um, which I already have, um, gone to Facebook and asked for local artists to pitch their ideas on what they would like to paint on the fence, I've had a great response so far, and, um, the idea would be that, that I would collect all the, the pitches and then submit them to the council, so it could be like, kind of like an anonymous, um, judging of what, what pictures we think would best suit the city to be painted on that wall or on the fence, so, um, there's not a deadline or anything, I don't think we're in a hurry for it, but, but there has been, um, a good bit of interest, which is exciting. I have some requests for the, um, that would support the Halloweeny Pet Parade, should I just ask for those at the regular meeting? Or just kind of mention them now and then touch back over them?
Yes, we can go ahead now, so we can.
Um, one would just be the request, and I know that you're on Fourth Street, but, um, Fourth Street behind Baldwin Square, um, if we could close that, um, just between four and six, um, because we are gonna have some vendors this year. The other option would be to close Old Forty-three, but I find that a lot of people, a lot of participants park on that side of the road, like on, on, they can park on both sides, um, so I've, I've not ever asked for the road to be closed before, but if that's a possibility, I would appreciate that, just to keep, you know, people that are walking around, um, safe back there. And, um, the needs from, um, Public Works would be, um, six, excuse me, eight tables, ten chairs, six trash cans, and those are just the, the rolling trash cans that would be, um, you can just put them all in one spot, and then I'll move them around and then roll them back at the end of the event, just wherever the garbage truck can get to most easily. Um, one portlet, uh, which would be like an assess, accessible portlet, and then one hands, hand wash station. And that's all.
I don't have a problem with that, okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works, Mr. Phillips.
I don't have nothing there.
All right, moving on down, for items for discussion and consideration, payment of the bills?
Can I do that?
I'll second.
Mr. Skeleton and Mr. Phillips. Okay, discussion and consideration, calling for Building Inspector One and Two list, um, did they ever get a lit two for us?
They, they have it opening for applications. Excuse me, I think they only have one person, and she said that they would hold it open, I think thirty days to get a list together.
Okay.
I'll, I'll do it.
It was the same name you had before, so.
Is it open under one and two, or?
Separately.
But it, both positions are open?
Yes, sir.
Can we just table that and see if we can get some names?
Won't to, I mean, that's, if it's the same name.
I'm just, I wonder if, if that two might be somebody we hadn't heard, seen before.
She said the two was the same person we had, same one we've had before, so they were trying to get more applicants, and that's why they opened it up.
We'll do whatever you want to do.
We, I mean, if we get, if they get some more, I mean, it'll be open just in case, might as well go ahead and do it.
Okay. Randy, you make the motion, who's gonna second the motion?
I second.
Okay, we'll look and see if they got any of you people on there. The final thing we have tonight on the resolution that's in the packet, um, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash ten dash zero one FY, physical year twenty-three budget, resolution.
I can do that.
I'll second it.
Mr. Skeleton to make the motion, Mr. Little to second it, is there any other business that needs to come before the council tonight?
You gonna do the C and D, D would be the temporary close that right away? That we talked about, due to safety?
Well, I thought we was gonna do that under Carl Knight, visitors, but, uh, but that's fine, if we want to do it either way.
Either, either way.
Carl, you gonna stay for the meeting? When, when you come up at the meeting, we'll get one of them to make a motion, I don't think you'll have any problem, we'll do a temporary closing of it, if that's okay? How was that, was that?
And then the, the C, discuss the.
Oh, yeah, I thought we'd already added that on D for discussion. We didn't?
We did.
Okay. All right, well, that's, those, that'll be added on, so we, we'll do that, is there anything else we need to have for? All right, well, that conclude our meeting, we got about seventeen minutes, and we will reconvene, and hopefully we'll have a nice, quick meeting. Okay, it's seven o'clock, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of Satsuma City Council on tonight, Tuesday, October the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, um, so welcome again to everyone, just a reminder, those of you that have cell phones, please put them to silent or turn them off so they won't disrupt the meeting. In just a moment, we're going to ask everyone to remove their hats and stand, uh, we're gonna ask Councilwoman Allison Reese to, uh, do our invocation tonight, uh, so she'll ask you to stand, please remain standing, uh, and we will have the pledge following the invocation, so if you would, please stand. Ms. Reese?
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you tonight, and we thank you for your many blessings, we ask that you put your hand of protection over our first responders, keep them safe, Lord, be with our children as they go through this world, just help them, be strong, and guide them to you, Lord. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Okay, moving on on our agenda tonight, we'll follow it, so, um, if I could, can we get a roll call, please, Heather?
Councilmember Little.
President.
Councilmember Butler.
President.
Councilmember Skeleton.
President.
Councilmember Reese.
Present.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Mayor Barlow.
Please let the record reflect that all the elected officials are present, along with the city clerk, the attorney, and the department heads. The next thing was the approval of the agenda, tonight we added on the agenda a C, and that was for us to discuss employee raises and the request of Councilman Skeleton, so with that one add on, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
We gonna do the, also do executive session?
That's right, I'm sorry, we are going to request a short period of, uh, executive session at the conclusion of the meeting to discuss some legal matters pending for the council.
I'll make a motion to approve with those two additions.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Skeleton, seconded by Mr. Little to approve the agenda with those two add-ons, any other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Moving on, approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on Tuesday, October the fourth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Reese, seconded by Mr. Skeleton to approve the minutes as distributed, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay. B, approval of the minutes from the workshop, which was held last Tuesday night, October the eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Little, seconded by Mr. Phillips to approve the workshop meeting minutes as distributed, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, next, recognitions, we don't have any tonight, uh, unlike the, but we're back with the Kiki's, but, so, but we did have two visitors tonight, um, the first one was Mr. Will Stewart, uh, the council heard Mr. Stewart state that he, speaking for the family, would like to request the picture this, uh, of his father be replaced with another picture of that time that, uh, they think is a, a picture that better, uh, suits, or appears to suit his father better, and something they would want, so he's going to get with the clerk, and they're going to set a date in the future, and the council all agreed to that, is that understanding, everybody agrees on that?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
That's great.
Okay, the second person that come before the council tonight was Mr. Carl Knight. Carl, would you like to come back up tonight, um, to the, for the regular meeting now, so we can officially address your concern? Mr. Knight lives on Fourth Street, he has remodeled an older home there that has a right-of-way, which basically goes right up to the side of his house. He furnishes some pre-council with the information of where the, his address, what the problem is, but is, basically has a right-of-way, which is almost on top of the house there, and so, something that the council thought perhaps could be a safety issue, and, um, for the record, Mr. Knight, is that what you're saying, you think that the, the vehicles coming through there, the speed they are and all this could cause a hazard?
Yes, sir, I, I believe it's definitely a safety issue.
Okay. Would, well, this was quite a lengthy discussion in our pre-council meeting tonight, and, um, it does appear that he has a problem there with that right-of-way between that, what was once the old post office there on Fourth Street, so, um.
I'd like to make a motion that we temporarily, um, close that right-of-way until we can handle the issue. I'll second it.
Mr. Little made the motion, and who was the second?
Yeah, either one of us.
Mr., okay, okay, motion made by Mr. Little, seconded by Mr. Phillips to temporarily close the right-of-way until we can have a chance to properly go about the procedure as we need to, to follow our rules of closing right-aways, but we will temporarily close that, we'll instruct the street department tomorrow to put something up there to notifying the, the people that it will be closed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion?
Is that Fourth Street?
The, my house faces Fourth Street, yes, sir.
Yes.
So where's the right-of-way, Jack?
It runs between Oak and Orange.
Runs between Oak and Four. It's parallel with Orange, on the north side.
So you want to temporarily close the right-of-way at Fourth and?
It don't have a, it don't have a name.
It's on the right-of-way.
Alley.
Right, an alleyway. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Little, seconded by Mr. Phillips to close the right-of-way, do you have, you think the detail you need for the motion? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, Mr. Knight?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now that we'll get the paperwork together, and so we can. And now we'll get the paperwork together, and so we can proceed with that, too, formally, closure of that. Okay, is there anyone else tonight that wants to come before the council? Okay. The things I went over in pre-council tonight, I can't, I don't think any, anything was really big, most of it was just housekeeping items. I did mention that we still have some sickness in our community, hopefully you'll keep those families in your prayers, and there's a fundraiser, I think it's going to be on Friday and Saturday, for one of our citizens locally, so if you get a chance to go by any of that, we'd really appreciate that, and I know the family would. The rebuild Alabama road paving project, as I said, they're still hoping to start that by the first part of the month, so hopefully we'll see them in here on that. Bid opening for the next sidewalk project is tomorrow morning at nine a.m. here at City Hall. We briefly in pre-council discussed the netting for Lyons Park, and we're going to probably pursue that a little more in a workshop, instead of boring the people having to listen to the, us looking for the netting, and we're going to try to find some local vendors that might be able to get something that I think would be probably more aesthetic for the park, and also, you know, something that may fit better than what we've found so far. I did mention that the chairs that we purchased recently have been picked up, and they're being stored at Public Works, so we should have those for the future. We did have the doors installed at Steel Creek Lodge today, the ones we've been trying to replace, they didn't quite finish the trim work around them today, but he said it should be finished tomorrow, so we have that. The Union Chapel is making some real headway now that they are putting the decking and all on it, so if y'all get a chance, ride by and look at that, that's looking pretty good. In pre-council, I discussed tonight with the council, the city perhaps trying to pursue an ALDOT or a grant from the railroad that we are looking to, in order to make crossings safer. We're looking at Pennsylvania Crossing there, where we have quite a bit of traffic early morning and in the afternoons, and the cars that back up, and the problems that happen, we have some of these long trains come by and backing up traffic, so the council agreed for us to try to look at a traffic study that may supply us the numbers that we would need, or the information needed to fill out the grant request. So I'm going to report back on that by the next council member meeting and let y'all know how that is progressing. There are some legal matters that I feel like needs to be addressed in executive session Hopefully we can do those, I think most of them will be handled pretty quickly, so we shouldn't need but about twenty minutes, and I think we could do that. Those are the major things that we've had going on, and it's planned for the next couple of weeks, so that's all I had, so I will move on and go to public services, Mr. Little.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Public safety, Mr. Butler.
Yeah, I didn't have anything at the pre-council, but while we're at the break right here, I talked with Troy, and I want to make sure that everything is cleaned up, what we're talking about, the K-9 dog, the Tahoe, and Officer Moore. If you could clear everything, Troy, tell us what we're talking about.
Yes, we, we had a discussion, and kind of got confused with the proposal of resignation and dates not being set, and Councilman Butler was of the impression that the price he proposed was agreed on, goes with, to take the cheap term, the sentence, and discuss a date of resignation if that syllabus made fine. I just wanted to make sure the council members and mayor that everyone was buying with that price and to negotiate, and there, I realized nothing's going to be voted on tonight, it was just unclear to me if everyone was in agreement on the price for, if that's something that's discussed.
Negotiate the price and the date, you know, try to give us something, so that way we can work in conjunction for what this price that we agree on, and then also the resignation date, we can maybe handle it at the next meeting.
Agreed on the application.
I think as long as it's in the ballpark, the council will give me a little flexibility on that, as long as we're close. I don't think y'all have a hard, hard absolute one to the dollar, do you?
I just know we talked around.
Right, that's what I'm saying, as long as it's close, right there. Okay. Okay, okay, that's no problem. Okay, moving to administration, Mr. Skeleton.
I don't have anything.
Parks and Recreation, Ms. Reese?
Yes, sir, I just want to give a big thank you to the Satsuma youth cheerleaders, they let me participate in one of their home games, and I was honored to cheer with them, they did a way better job than I did, but it was a great time, I had a smile on my face the entire time, and they are very precious, so I enjoyed that. Also, the next municipal dinner is in Sims on Thursday, I'll be there, maybe I'll see you guys there. Also, the, I mentioned in pre-council, the Bark Park is, I would say, complete, ninety-five percent, it's ready, and so I'd like to possibly schedule a ribbon cutting for Saturday, November twelfth, maybe ten, maybe two, I don't know, we can check our calendars, but the, one of the things that's left undone is that the space is on the fence, they are, they are ready for local artists to share their ideas and get things painted on them, and we've had a lot of activity on social media with some ideas, and it would be where they would submit ideas to the council, and then the council would vote on which ideas they liked the best, and I don't have an end time on that, but figure to keep it open for a couple of weeks, and if we need to do more than four spaces, I think we can always add more. Also, the fountain looks really great, appreciate that. Two things that we do have left to do are a picnic table, and I know Tom Breon had mentioned about the Lions Club possibly doing a picnic table, I don't know if he reached out to them or not, but it's a picnic table for under the pavilion, and then we spoke about playground equipment to go in that place, and I did have a lady that messaged me saying that there were kids that were going to the park, and I promised her that we were going to have equipment coming up soon, so she was excited to hear that. So, we have breathed life back into Magnolia Park, and I'm excited. Also, Third Annual Howell Owieeney Pet Parade is coming up on Sunday, October thirtieth, from four to six. We're going to do what we did the last two years, and we're also going to add some things, like inflatables for the kids, so the kids will have something to do there, cotton candy, those two things will be free for anybody, whether they have a dog or not, we just want everybody to come out and have a good time. The Trailmaids have been invited, and they're always our guest judges, so we're looking forward to that. There's going to be puppuchinos, door prizes, a raffle, vendors, so it's going to be a lot of fun. Also, oh, yeah, yeah, Wags and Whiskers is going to do a pet adoption during the event, so if you don't have a dog, and you're looking for a dog, come on out, because they're going to have some cute faces, that's for sure. Also, have made some requests from the mayor to have Fourth Street closed behind Baldwin Square, just to keep participants and vendors safe, back there, obviously we'll allow the homeowners to access their property. And then, from Public Works, we had asked for one accessible port-alet, one hand wash station, six trash cans, eight tables, and ten chairs, and the tables are just like the folding chairs, it doesn't matter what, whether it's like six or eight foot or whatever, so, and this is the last meeting before the event goes off, so looking forward to seeing everybody there. Oh, and the witch's ride, which the city, I guess we're offering support on the witch's ride, I don't have a lot of details, but meet at Steel Creek, I think is where it starts, and then do a little bike tour, and then, I think it's for ladies only, so go do your, do your witch's ride, go home, pick up the husband and the kids and the pets, and then come on out to the pet parade, so that's all I have.
If we're going to close the street, I think that requires a motion.
Okay.
So you'll have to make a motion, get a second to, for us to close the street for said two hours in order to have the event.
Okay, I make a motion that we close Fourth Street directly behind Baldwin Square, actually that's on the east side.
On Sunday, October the thirtieth.
Sunday, October thirtieth, from four to six.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to close the street from four to six that day for the event, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Is that all, Ms. Reese?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to Public Works, Mr. Phillips?
I don't have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, well, we've gone through the council, so now the items for discussion and our consideration. First thing on the agenda tonight is payment of the bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of forty-two thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Skeleton, seconded by Mr. Phillips to pay the bills in the set amount, I think it was forty-two thousand, three eighty-nine, sixty-three. Any questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All right, the next thing is discussion and consideration for calling for Building Inspector One and Two list.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Little and seconded by Mr. Skeleton to, once again, call for Building Inspector List One and Two. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Okay, I think we added C in on discussion and consideration, the request from Mr. Skeleton, he was wanting to discuss possible raises, and I think this tied in with some other things, but you want to go ahead, Mr. Skeleton?
Yeah, I would like to, like for us to discuss, you know, we've got, they put five percent in for employee raises, and I'd like to kind of walk through that and see if we wanted to do, if you wanted to do that, you wanted to do half of it, you want to do across the board, do you want to do it as a cost of living, you know, how did you want to do it? I'd like to try to proceed with something so we can have it on, get it through the personnel board process, so it could go in around November twenty-fifth, is when it would take effect.
Okay. I certainly don't have any problem with this discussing, and I think Mr. Phillips had asked about having a workshop on that, where we could discuss the, you know, the vacancies we have, the hiring, the promotions we have. Sergeant Will Cut called me today, he's been in contact with the personnel board regarding opening up positions and also raises and that, so I think all that should be included in the discussion, so if that would be okay, so we can have to put it off.
Yes.
I mean, we should have time, day's the eighteenth of October, when would be good for y'all to have a meeting, I know we've had a couple of workshops lately, which we always do around the time of the year for the budget.
If you want it for November, they just keep in mind you got to get it to the personnel board before their meeting of the month, because they have to, I'm not sure, I'm not sure when their meeting is.
They had a meeting today, so I'm assuming they should have a meeting again.
Maybe November.
Should be around the fifteenth or so, or by the fifteenth, I would think. Still feel like we have plenty of time, if y'all want to look at your schedule, we got next Tuesday night, the twenty-fifth, and that would give us a week to have any details worked out, and the next regular meeting is two weeks from tonight.
First Tuesday, late tonight.
Well, if we done it, we had a workshop next Tuesday night, we might have something ready, we could, uh.
More time.
Will, y'all want to have one meeting a month now? That's what I thought.
June last night, first Tuesday.
We can definitely have it to them, time for the meeting. So we could do it then, or we could, well, we got, we got something Thursday, so that wouldn't be available. Next Tuesday night, the twenty-fifth, or the twenty-seventh is next Thursday night.
I can do the twenty-fifth around five-thirty.
Mr. Skeleton's requested workshop on next Tuesday would be October the twenty-fifth, five-thirty p.m. And we'll have to make sure that we have that posted tomorrow. Listing the topics would be employee raises, promotions.
Open positions.
Also, other city business, you know, open positions and other city business. Okay. A, B, and C is now down, so moving on to resolutions, ordinances, orders, and other business. A, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash one zero dash oh one, so twenty-two, ten, oh one.
I'll make a motion to.
We're going to have to suspend the rules, put this up for immediate adoption, aren't we? We didn't introduce it last week, or did we?
We had the.
Budget, but we didn't.
Voted on the budget.
We already discussed the budget, see, we had to.
Okay. All right.
I think y'all put it up for consideration last time, didn't you?
Mm-hmm. I didn't remember we was putting the resolution, if we did or not, okay?
We didn't have an official resolution, but you put the budget up for adoption for tonight, so just adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Let's do it back.
All right.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash ten dash zero one for the fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Skeleton, seconded by Mr. Little to put Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash ten dash oh one up for adoption, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. We have addressed everything that was on the agenda tonight, I did request approximately twenty minutes from the council for us to go over some legal matters with the attorney, and so, thank all of you for coming, you're more than welcome to stay here, we should be back in about twenty, no more than twenty-five minutes, and, but we'll probably just adjourn. Thank all of you for coming, and, okay, and, yeah, I was going to say, now if we get a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Skeleton, seconded by Ms. Reese, for us to go into executive session for approximately twenty minutes. Thank you. All righty, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, we.